I do.
Right. I just was checking.
You okay, Ms. Councillors? Okay, we're gonna call our school board meeting to order. This is a special meeting and workshop. We just had an executive session and I believe we're going to have a, I'm sorry, we had administrative hearing and I believe we're gonna have an executive session here probably before the end of today. So, we'll do that later in the day. And with that, we will turn it over to Ms. Councillors.
Opening exercises in a minute, but I just need to make an announcement for Forest Ridge Elementary School. That's one of my SAC schools. And the little girl that's playing the lead role in Judy V. Jones, which is in competition with our Golden Scholars Meeting, was then more than willing to come for opening exercises and give you a little scene from it, but since it's school time, we can't have her. So, I just would like to make an announcement to all of us that we can go to Golden Scholars because they're also going to do two practice performances at the school. One at 9:30 in the morning and one at 1:30 in the afternoon, so that you can catch one of those and we can still go to Golden Scholars at night. And then, for opening exercises, I think I have to go back to what Mrs. Kirby did with us last meeting, and that was real beautiful memory of autistic child that graduated from Citrus High School. And I hope as we go into our month of testing, that our teachers are blessed with that same saying, "You can do it," and trust that our children will believe them.
Attention, ladies and gentlemen, to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Councillors. And with that, we will move to have somebody move to adopt the agendas recommended by the superintendent.
I'll make a motion to adopt the agendas recommended by the superintendent.
I have a motion by Mr. Dodd, a second by Ms. Bryant, to adopt the agendas recommended by the superintendent. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries five zero. Citizens' comments? And we will move right into school support services.
Good morning. I ask the board's approval of the instructional and support recommendations as listed on the Golden Run.
Move to accept personnel information and support as recommended by the superintendent on the Golden Run. A second.
I have a motion by Ms. Councillors, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the superintendent's recommendations and approval on instructional and support recommendations. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning. I request approval for the School Board of Citrus County's resolution regarding student crime watch program in order to promote responsibility among students and improve school safety. This was mandated by statute that we have a resolution to this effect.
I move to approve the student crime watch program.
I have a motion by Ms. Bryant, a second by Mr. Dodd, to approve the School Board of Citrus County Resolution, Student Crime Watch Program. Any questions or comments?
Having a resolution, following the resolution, it's going to happen in June.
It is already in place. It's been implemented. Again, by statute, it was required that there be a board resolution, and it's a program in which students can anonymously report any type of suspicious or criminal activity, and we fulfill that through our Campus Crime Stoppers Program as well as through the Fortify Florida app. Yes, we have posters in the school. It's in our handbook. We promote Campus Crime Stoppers and Fortify Florida.
And I think they're on both of the apps or on the iPads for students as well. Okay. Anybody have, we just need a motion. Oh, we didn't hear a motion? I'm sorry. Yeah, we did. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Good morning. I am here to seek approval for the purchase of ClassLink, which is a single sign-on program. And so, what that allows us to do is students and staff can click on an icon on their mobile device, on their computer, or through the web, and then they would be able to log in once and access all of their digital materials from their textbooks, different programs that we're utilizing. And in addition, we can personalize the experience per school, so there could be a tile where the administrator can put bulletins or special flyers that they want the staff or students to see, and the same thing for the district. In addition, it allows us to actually use analytics to compare programs and how many times students are logging in or staff to the program. We can do it by school. We can do it across the district, so that would give us a good idea of, you know, which programs are being used and where we should spend our dollars. I have had the experience of speaking to numerous districts that are currently using ClassLink, and it has saved them a great deal of time. It works really well with the different publishing platforms that we use, and so I feel like it would be a good move. It's easy for the students and the staff to use, and our problem right now is stoneware. They have, the company that purchased them has not really been making any updates. It's just kind of static, and we're not getting a lot of support and improvements on the product, and it's cumbersome for students and staff to use and for us on the backside to configure everything.
That's the existing one.
The existing one that's stoneware.
This one is not developed.
No. Actually, we had, I wasn't able to attend, a committee went down to Martin County to visit the schools, and so I kind of gave a few of them homework. I said, "Hey, when you're down there, can you talk to the technical staff and the teachers and students about ClassLink?" I knew they were using it, and I had had a chance to speak to some district administrators. The tech person down there that oversees ClassLink and the setup said that it was very easy for them on the backside.
Does it get their location, the user's location?
No.
Just trying to get people to be able to find it quickly.
And just for clarification, this is gonna replace stoneware, so we'll no longer have the cost of stoneware or the redundancy of having to maintain that product anymore?
Correct.
And then, the single login was part of a mandate through, loosely through statute, through a federal government requirement with regards to digitalization and that. Is that still part of this, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Okay. So, we need to have some type of direction of a single login solution. And I say that just because it's not like, although these have great features, it's not simply that we are just desiring this. This is part of that requirement.
Correct. I was also quite pleased, when I was initially talking to the company and they were sending me quotes, in interim from the first quote to now, they were able to actually have us join the pricing from the PAC consortium, so the Panhandle Consortium, so we saved a good deal of money. So, I was quite pleased with that as well. And that's the difference. When you see the amount budgeted, because I initially budgeted for next year what the first quote was, and then in the interim, they were able to save us some money. So, I was excited about that.
And Ms. Androwski, does this also allow so that some of your tech people behind the scenes, when they need to update the passwords and they need to do them for the entire, so that all of my passwords are regenerated with next year, so if I'm a student, if I'm a freshman this year, and I'm a sophomore next year, so that all of that
Correct.
follows through, this allows that? Because I know with stoneware, that there was a lot of work behind the scenes trying to get all those pieces to talk together. The publishers in this, little better than
Yes.
than that. And that's actually what kind of caught my attention in the beginning earlier, in the fall. I was sitting on a presentation with some, I published some people that are in charge of the instruction materials and work with different publishers and watching their process, and they mentioned ClassLink and described how it has expedited everything for their support personnel as well as the students and teachers. And so, I started paying attention then, and every time that I could visit or talk to somebody about it and see if it was really the direction that we should go in, I took advantage of that.
Any other questions? All those in favor?
That would make
Oh, go ahead. Yes.
Motion to approve the purchase of ClassLink.
Second. I have a motion by Ms. Councillors, a second by Mr. Dodd, to approve the purchase of ClassLink. Any last questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries five zero.
And thank you for your very thorough investigation.
Thank you. I'm a researcher. I am here, I'm next on the agenda for Archive Social, and so I'm seeking approval to continue with our Archive Social Agreement. If we signed, we signed a contract, or we would like to sign a contract with them that would save us a little bit of money. And Archive Social, if you're not familiar with that, that is what we use to archive the social media accounts that are used by our district, but as well as the teacher and clubs and the schools and, you know, maybe, so Facebook, YouTube, Twitter, all of the communication that occurs on those accounts is archived, and then that way, if we needed to pull up for public records, we have access to do so. Yes. To make sure that we are thorough, we have worked with the schools to get everybody that might have an account to register, because sometimes a club creates a social media account, you know, to publicize or, you know, attract more attention to their club and communicate with their club members, and we weren't necessarily in the know on that, so we made sure that we had everybody join, but that resulted in an increased amount of social media interactions being archived, so we had to increase our package.
And I just want to thank Ms. Androwski and Mr. Mullen for this, because this really is keeping all of us out of trouble. It's, we, you know, we have encouraged social media on every level with our instructional, good use of it. We continue to put policies, we're improving those policies, but we're only as good as our public records in a state of Florida. And as we know through our ethics training, you know, we are one lawsuit away from always an issue, so this is the right step forward. And I know the dad and Mr. Mullen would say, you know, "If you can't handle it, we're gonna knock that 50-watt bulb down to a 10-watt bulb," because our cost is increasing, and so we've been struggling to maintain that. So, excellent job for everybody. So, thank you. Anything else? All those in favor? Oh, we didn't have a motion. I'm sorry.
I make a motion that we approve the Archive Social Agreement.
I have a motion by Ms. Councillors, a second by Ms. Powers, to approve the, Ms. Bryant, I'm sorry, to approve the social archive, to approve Archive Social Agreement. Any last questions or comments? Mr. Dodd?
I'm gonna address the ClassLink issue.
We'll come back to that?
Yes.
Okay. We're okay on Archive Social right now? Okay. With that, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries five zero. Mr. Ratchell.
I talked to Ms. Androwski. She, this is all the addendum to the ClassLink that I prepared, so the actual ClassLink contract, you need to approve the contract and the addendum.
So, I need a motion to Oh, you don't have, I'm sorry.
But it's on page, it includes on the addendum, if you'll look at the second whereas clause, it includes the ClassLink software licensing agreement, the ClassLink service loading agreement, and non-disclosure agreement, which all that adds up to about 50 pages.
Okay.
But the actual contract is more like invoice, if memory serves me correctly, so.
So, we'll have to do that at the next meeting?
I'm gonna go get it.
Oh. I just want to close. I can always recess and then come back.
You advertise it to group class, so that's fine.
Okay. Then, with that, we'll just, we'll circle back to that, attorney legal matters. Mr. Bishop?
I just want to make the board aware that on May 14th, we will be bringing in the Citrus High School Way of the team to be recognized probably as Citrus High School's first team state championship.
Mr. Mullen? Mr. Dodd? Ms. Bryant?
I'm just looking at this calendar of May. It's already all filled in. All filled in. I better go back and look at April, though. Oh, yeah. I went to a lot of SECs. Yes, I did. They were awesome as usual. And tomorrow I go to visit, which is why I can't go to Ink and Forest Ridge or Citrus.
Yeah, and I will be at the FJCC meeting on Sunday, so I'm not gonna be at the IB banquet on Sunday. Sorry.
I should be back for that. I mean, we're Doug's family. And I want to leave for you with a
Thank you, yes.
...a tangible, I'm gonna, super good, just a relaxed session, and said exactly what we felt and talked about what we wanted to talk about, so it wasn't real formal, but it felt all of a sudden, because we're not feeling very, I think it's very productive, probably, because we see each other and we cooperate with each other, trust each other.
Thank you for doing that.
Oh, absolutely. We have the same calendar. Pretty settled to the world, but in general, oh, and just a fine bystander on Sunday about the Easter services. And the oddest thing occurred, I've never had it happen before, where the preacher and the church gave out money to the congregation instead of taking a collection. They gave money and everyone got that. Of 16, got $10, and they were asked to pass it on to give this to somebody else, something else. You're always in shock, "What?" But that was such a great idea, and you felt so warm and fuzzy, the whole thing. You felt like, hey, I could provide someone to make sure I'm using this properly. Here's your chair up for episode. Is that true? That's the truth?
Thank you.
I have to apologize for Mrs. Bryant for getting to, she went to Math Field Day and watched her children in hell.
Oh, yeah.
Math Field Day was awesome. I just thought, sun is shining, it's Saturday morning, and there's over 400 kids sitting there doing math problems.
What's wrong with this picture?
What's wrong with this picture? It must be Citrus County. So, we, Math Field Day was a delight. Upward Bound, last week, featured the secondary. I think tomorrow morning is our primary. I'll be there tomorrow morning. I went to a SAC meeting. One disturbing thing, and I'll say Forest Ridge again, everything seems to be going really good at the school, but they have some very vocal children on their SAC committee. And so, this one young man stood up and said that his kids told him that they needed more soccer balls than nets. And in almost unison, from administration through teachers and staff, said no, because the children don't take care of it. Now, they, the teachers have their own stuff that they bring out in their bins, but it was that they kicked the soccer balls like footballs. And I said, "Well, you know, I was at Crystal River High School for years, and I had to pass Crystal River primary. I saw the little butt sitting on the fence when they disrespected the equipment." And we were told that we can't do that anymore. And how come? If they're kicking a soccer ball like a football and I have no idea what they're talking about, so you can look into them. Yeah, but the little kids wanted it. There may be another side to that story. Yeah, but
You're talking about why they can't sit out. That's because your legislature's mandated there's 20 minutes of recess, and you cannot take
That's what it is.
He's talking about the soccer ball.
They should talk about sitting down on the fence.
If they're misusing, yeah, but
Right. They're sitting down on the fence, yeah.
Can't we maybe just keep running on the track and not play?
Depends on how we phrase it.
Good answer, Mr. Mullen.
This little kid, I mean, they shot him down pretty heavily, and I felt kind of sorry for him. Well, that's a little corn on the horn, too. I agree that they don't have enough soccer balls.
That's an example of overreaching from their part.
Yeah, and they, and I will tell you, at every SAC meeting, the kids are always asking for more fun stuff, so, but I was surprised that every one of the administrators and staff and teachers were saying they don't respect the equipment. And it's always a few kids, just a few. So, other than that, looking forward to May. Our calendar is very full, so, and it's good. Starting with Golden Scholars and then keep on going through scholarships and seeing what this county's all about.
Ms. Bryant, could you start?
Yeah, before we leave Upward Bound, at our last Upward Bound, Ray Darling was there, and he is the rotarian that came up with Upward Bound. He's the one that started the whole thing. And now that he started his own scholarship, he had a scholarship recipient there. Lindsay, did you get her picture?
I did.
Oh, good. Thank you. And, I don't know.
We don't, we have an archive.
I can't say anything. She was a gorgeous little girl. And he's gonna give that scholarship in his name every year from here on out to anybody that was Upward Bound. And she was a former Upward Bound student. I just shared that here. I was naked.
That's so great. And then, we're gonna go into our workshop here. We're gonna recess the meeting, but just a couple of reminders. We have Golden Citrus, as we talked about on Thursday, the IB banquet on Sunday. We have Crystal River Senior Awards starts next Thursday. And then, we have the First Annual on Friday night, the WTC's First Annual Made for the Trades, which has become huge, or huge, depending on where you're. And then, as Ms. Councillor said, we go right into May, and it is a busy time for us. We say goodbye to our families, and we spend the evenings together.
What is the made for the trades?
That is on the 3rd, I believe. Yes, the 3rd. And Ms. Gloria Bishop, you can get with on some of that, or if you get with Ms. Lisa, she'll get with Ms. Bishop.
I've got our staff lunch on the 3rd.
Yes, we have that, too. We also have that. I forgot about that. Thank you very much.
No problem.
And with that, I guess we can go back to then getting a motion, but I'm gonna give everybody a second if they need to read this.
Thank you, Ms. Androwski.
You're welcome. I apologize.
It's nice and warm, too.
Hot off the cross.
Chill. This is the original agreement, but inside of it says, you know, the other privacy, non-disclosure agreements and everything else, and so, I modify disagreement to disagreement. I'm pretty cool.
I move to accept the agreement along with the addendum for the ClassLink.
My second.
I have a motion by Ms. Councillors, a second by Ms. Bryant, to approve the, I'm sorry, ClassLink Service Agreement and Addendum. Any questions or comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Okay, and with that, Ms. Hallow? Okay. Anything else we need? With that, I'm gonna then go ahead and adjourn our special meeting, and we will go into our workshop. And I believe policy reviews are up first.
Good morning, everyone. The first item for review today is a request to review and revise Policy 3.40, Safe and Secure Schools. This was discussed by the Policy and Forms Committee in February. There are several sections with revisions. These were recommended due to changes in statutes received from EMCS, and additional change was made by the Risk Management Department to address the ALICE protocols specifically in Section 4B. And Ms. Ernich is here, too, as well. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Check, ma'am. Look, I think you have a piece of paper.
Yes, ma'am. And I want to get some specificity about what were your concerns?
It's like on 4C. It has, I'll read it, and it'll say that the cell itself is destroying. There's something missing, or something that needs to be rewritten, or whatever it is. As required by law, the superintendent will coordinate with public safety agencies that are designated for protection purposes. Schools, not here, but our school campus tours once every three years, and provide recommendations related to safety. The injunction to school campus tours once every three years, this is not a parallel structure, just like this thrown in. So, a person reading it, not knowing that, we know what we're talking about, but not knowing to say, "Well, what is this? I don't understand it." So, I think that particular, our paragraph needs to be rewritten so it flows smoothly.
If you take the comment out as a
It's a book, you know, because it starts with school campus tours, you know.
Well, they'll coordinate with public safety agencies for campus tours. So, I think the part that's making it sound right is the fact our designation of first responders describes public safety agencies, right? So, if you want that to flow better, you know, the superintendent will coordinate with public safety agencies, school campus tours once every three years, provide recommendations related to safety. So, the fact that they define public safety agencies, I guess, kind of makes it harder to read.
Right, right, exactly. Because it's not fair, fair or meaning, how you have such a bird, such a bird, such a bird, that type of structure. But here, something is just thrown in. It's not, it's not a correct structure. But as you say, if you revise it like you're suggesting, then it will not conform to the structure.
I can see where that's confusing.
And I had problems with that. That's something stupid. Then I had a problem with C matching with A when we delete the Fire Marshal's representatives of the Emergency Medical Services. And I don't know, I say EMS is emergency first responders, you know, that's what we call them. So, I don't know why, why did we delete everybody except for law enforcement agencies and school resource officers for input, and yet we come down to C and say that we will have, have these guys inspect us every three years, and they're not part of the input.
And they, that's why we did change it, because they are not the ones that sit around the table with us when we develop our safe school plan and revise on an annual basis. But then on C, by statute, we do coordinate those tours. By statute, they must go on those tours with us.
Okay.
And so, we are, we are doing that.
Okay, so they're not part of the input of the safety plan, but they are gonna be part of the inspection plan?
Right, and as we inspect, they're giving us input and feedback through the campus tour.
Okay.
But not the actual revision of the safe school plan we do on the annual basis. But not the actual revision of the safe school plan we do on an annual basis.
Okay.
And on B, um, you know, we have this in there because this is very important, that all personnel are powered back to be emergency, back to sales and response procedures. But I wasn't sure, when you say, "And those procedures are being immediately implemented upon notification," um, so are you, what you're trying to say is that if it's, if it's activated, there would be immediately implemented, right?
Right.
So what's the upon notification? Notification that's, is, they don't have to notify the principal agent to activate the emergency procedure. So shouldn't we take out upon notification?
Most of this is from statute. We were mandated to put, put this in by statute. So I, I wanna look at the statute and compare the verbiage there.
Right.
But what we're saying, and this has been in our, this has been part of our process for years, but we were just mandated to make sure all staff know that they can implement ALICE or implement the emergency procedures. So again, for years in our red and green emergency folder, it says right there very clearly that any staff number can call an emergency situation. But we're saying that everybody's empowered to activate it. You know, they can, they can pick up a phone page or whatever. We don't wanna get into too much detail, but they can implement ALICE. Any staff number can do that. And upon notification is all we're saying, is we're gonna put our strategies into place. Upon hearing that first alert or upon hearing notification, then we're going to implement all of our processes and procedures.
The next question, it says upon notification two, then five, then four, it's a confusion of two words.
Yeah, it's really just upon notification, but that's, that's part of ALICE. The A is alert. When you hear an alert, if there's a problem, then immediately, we're gonna implement all of our strategies.
People don't implement the procedures until they're notified. So upon notification, they implement ALICE.
We're just saying there'll be no delay. You know, we're immediate.
If you have put a period after implement, then it would be really clear. Immediate notification.
Right.
But the two words upon notification, your question is two, then four, then-
I think we dropped upon notification. I mean, I think immediately. I mean, we're implementing ALICE.
I think it's clear that way.
Can we argue in order to say all personnel are powered back to the emergency act of assailant response procedures, ALICE protocol, period, upon notification, that's procedure. Just another option.
Like just dropping these three words.
All right, so period after, and what is it?
So I, I wanna stay in the same section, section four. I wanna go to E, because I think either, and I've read through this-
Mr. Dodd, before you, so please, we're gonna draw upon notification.
Yes.
On E. So we do the self-assessments. And then the superintendent shall convene a safety and security review meeting for the purpose of reviewing the current safe school plan.
Safe school plan results. Again, this came from statute. These were mandated by statute.
Right, so, um, it says though, it says that you convene a safety and security review meeting for the purpose of reviewing the current safe school plan should be comma, the results of the self-assessment, comma, and any other related matters concerning the self-assessment of safe school plan. That's the only way I could make sense of that.
Yeah.
Because it was like, um, aren't those three different things? We had A, B, C, D, but, and I don't, I don't mind taking out those identifiers, but-
I think we could take out safe school plan, because we're actually reviewing the results of the FSAT. I think the reason we were trying to leave it in there is because it was already there. We had set full safety and security.
Right.
And it was already in there. So the proper title of our plan is a safe school plan. But I don't know that it has to be in this particular one, because upon completion of the self-assessments, that's the FSAT.
Right.
The superintendent shall convene a safety and security review meeting for the purpose of reviewing the results of-
Of the self-assessment. Right. Okay.
Good, good.
So it states, upon completion of these self-assessments, the superintendent shall convene a safety and security review meeting for the purpose of reviewing the results of the self-assessment. And that's what we are really doing, the results of our FSAT.
And any other matters related, and any other related matters concerning the self-assessment and safety point.
Okay, sounds good.
And I, I, I know you all may ask more questions too, but I had another one, so-
Go ahead, go ahead.
Go ahead. So on the threat assessment process, um, you know, this too is another area that we could stay on top of because of all the issues that happened at Martha'sville, those high schools, you know, issues with identifying, you know, potential threats. You know, we don't, you know, if there's a recognizable threat that's looked into immediately, um, and there's a threat assessment process. Um, and we have that in place. I mean, that's something that we're doing. And we just need to get this into, into policy. But on B, when we say the board authorizes, and again, this is law now. This is simple 726.
Five.
On B, on five V, who authorizes superintendent to create building level, train threat assessment teams? I thought that we were required as a board to mandate. I thought the board, I mean, because if we authorize you as a superintendent, that, that still leaves you the option of doing it or not, right? Is that what? I mean, shouldn't we say we mandate, I mean, if we're requiring-
I guess you could say the, the board authorizes the superintendent, or somewhere there, there needs to be must.
Yeah, this is something that has to be done. So I don't, I mean, we can, um, and I know we don't use that word a lot, um, in our policies, but, you know, we, we have to make sure that we're, we're not just authorizing it at your discretion. You know, we're saying this-
Has to be done.
This has to be done. This-
Or correct.
Okay, that's, okay, yeah, that's good. Mr. Dodd, this came straight from EMCS and see what they recommend. Well, I think you should put the board directives.
And Chuck, that's okay. You're saying we can change that, right?
Yeah, because they just, they said it's a recommendation.
They make EM, EMCS stuff all the time.
Okay, that's sure. And who, while you and someone writing this stuff where this is necessary, what process does it go through before it gets to us?
It goes through policy and forms.
Oh, here, it goes through, it went through policy and forms.
Before it gets to policy and forms.
EMCS.
EMCS.
They need to shape up some-
They're out, aren't they out of business?
Well, they're transitioning. We now are within effect. Our next group of updates will come from northeast Florida, which will come up.
And I think you'll be happy.
Maybe that's why we're using, because we use it through like that forever, because we don't have a staff to create it.
Yeah.
Yeah, most boards, yeah, most boards use, use either EMCS or-
Niola.
And we know you've got your other boards.
Yeah.
And Mr. Dodd. And Mr. Dodd. For the safety. Mr. Dodd, before you leave anywhere, did we pick C? Did you all agree with how we wanted on C? Will you bring something on this?
Oh, C. Yes, we're gonna reword C based on Mr. Dodd's suggestion. So that'll be clear. Yes. If I have any questions, I'll contact.
And if we go back to this one then, five B, what were you gonna say on that?
The board directs this.
Correct.
Okay.
And then on number two, on that same, on five B two, on the next page. So, you know, I'm trying to just make sure, you know, we know this process for a behavioral threat. So upon a preliminary determination that a student posed a threat of violence or physical harm, the threat assessment team may obtain criminal history information. So there's two things here that I wanna touch on. Is the time to meet, because we've discussed a lot about it. There's legislation, there's recommendations that talk about, you know, the required time period to meet after information is shared about a threat, a potential threat. My question, I guess, is what is a preliminary determination? And what are we saying to our threat assessment teams as far as when they, how much time they have to meet to address the threat? And then the second thing is on that, is how, you know, the threat assessment team may obtain criminal history record information. So there's an SRO, our law enforcement, is partly threat assessment team. Are we clear on, that's my second part of the question, on how they're gonna get that criminal history information in immediate faction? I mean, they're not gonna be required for us to fill out paperwork? I mean, my understanding, I'm like the-
We have that information sharing through DJJ, the sheriff.
Right, but is the sheriff gonna be the one providing the criminal, criminal history? Or?
We don't, we don't have access to criminal history. The only access we have to criminal history is when we do a background screen on employees. That's all the time we run in the taxi.
Right, but what I'm saying is there, we need that, as part of the team, they need to have that information immediately.
We also get a lot of criminal history information from DJJ if I'm not mistaken.
But the timing is vital during double SCL. How fast can we get that information? Three days? No, 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 it's be immediate.
Some of that, that's gonna be with DJJ and the sheriff office too. So I don't know if it's addressed in an immediate investigation.
Well, they're part of the threat assessment team, and that was the purpose for all these players to get together. And it is in the law that they must provide criminal history information. I just wanna make sure how that process will work.
But you could say immediately, and this is doesn't find the sheriff, you know, provide that information. So I would just say, I would assume the threat assessment, I would assume the threat assessment, like, let's say, to try and let the student poses a threat, that information should be immediate. But I don't think there's anything that's right.
I'm the one who oversees the threat assessment process and she assures me that they are getting it immediately. They're working together cooperatively and they're getting like a-
This gets early. Requesting, I mean, you get it.
So she said the threat assessment team requested and they're getting it immediately from the sheriff's office. So the process is going. Is that correct?
That's correct.
If they can't do it by the way, we can get it very easily from DJJ, from Jim Lightbody.
Okay, so what is the-
And Ray, address that, Mr. Dodd. And I would think that if we're having issues getting it, we need to know that.
And we're not.
I don't.
Yes, ma'am.
So we can document when we request it and how soon we get it.
Well, my, my thought is that when these teams meet, they got a potential threat of getting it there to, to make decisions on what, what's gonna happen to the child, you know? And so that's why that criminal history is so important. So I'm glad to hear that. What about the preliminary determination? And how do, of that first part of my question? Because when I read this, um, you know, there's no, what's the time period for the threat assessment team to meet? Shouldn't we have that in policy?
Are you asking about a specific time, Mr. Dodd? Like within?
Right, within 24 hours, within, you know, well, first of all, the preliminary determination kinda froze. So if you have a teacher that identifies a child as a potential threat, have they made the preliminary determination? Okay, right. They're reporting it.
They report that threat assessment team determines, that does a preliminary to see what the, you know, if it's low level, if it's unfounded, low level, medium level, et cetera.
So where do we have in the threat assessment, I did see it, and it might be in here, that when they get, when they are identified as a threat, child is identified as a threat, that the threat assessment team meets. And it's probably in here. I just, I, I've read through it once over, haven't done it all twice over, but is there, it talks in A about it's centered upon analysis of facts and evidence of behavior in a given situation, and in B, the threat assessment teams that are set up. But like, what, I mean, how do we know that if there's a, if it's a school day and a threat is brought, a potential threat is brought in and reported, how do we know that that, the timeframe that that's not, and that's gonna be handled quickly and not?
Well, the schools know that any threat that's made is to be reported immediately to risk management, to Ms. Cernich.
Let's get it in the policy.
And then to student services.
Yeah, I say let's get it in the policy so that we don't have any doubt of, of times. I mean, if we say immediately, at least we can have an identifiable time period. Because when this, when, when we all change, when, you know, I wanna make sure that what, what we live by here is we're saying, hey, and there's a threat that's coming in, there's gonna be immediate processing. And that's what I, I hadn't seen there. I mean, everything here is good. I understand now, the, upon the, upon the team meeting, and they're saying there is a determination that there is a threat, they can then request the criminal history information, which I think is in the statute, if I remember right. It's simple 726. Once they meet on, if there is, if there's a note to point to that there's a potential threat, they can get criminal history information.
Since we reworded other parts of this, maybe I'll re-read that part of threat assessment, threat assessment teams and see if, and also wanna make sure there's a new law that's coming out that they change.
Yeah.
But we'll reword those portions in that, in that paragraph, checking it in five of the statute and dispensing the department of the statute.
Right, okay.
That is a real concern that we, we wanna be sure we're covering all bases on this. And if, say at the end of the day, and I seen this happen one time, at the end of the day, something like this comes up and, you know, everyone's supposed to be going home. You can't say, "Well, we'll pitch up for this on Monday." You gotta complete whatever it is that you're doing. So we need something that, that's in there that's really solid.
Do you continue reading on number two? It says upon preliminary determination, and that says the team must immediately report this determination to the superintendent designated, who must immediately attempt to notify the parent body. So it's in here that we do immediately.
And this is a very fluid area and there is probably some- Oh, I, I don't doubt that. Once the team meets, I mean, and, you know, one of the things that needs to make sure there's a district level review of these threat assessments, which is, is kind of been the recommendation. In this case, once all that's happened, that, you know, it's immediately notified, the superintendent report designated parents. And what I'm saying, I'm sure, is when it, when it first comes through from the teacher, do the time that the threat assessment team meets.
That's been my question too, though. I think is, there's the, we have the policy and then we have the procedural and manual. And I, some of this, I feel like we're getting into that manual side of it. And, and I'm, and did, did we approve that or is that, that's still the piece? That's why I thought we had it approved.
Yes, sir, it was-
That was recently, if I recall.
We brought it back to the board, um, in the fall. Yes.
And are these elements of the, the details behind the wording?
Specifically.
The specifics, if I recall, are there? So immediate means and, and what that process and the teams and the parties and so forth. Cause that seems to be the nuts and bolts of really what the concerns are here, unless I'm mistaking something.
Yeah, well, I, I would agree. I think what is specifically in the threat assessment manual itself is probably what Mr. Dodd is talking about, that some of that be in here so that everybody knows in policy what needs to be covered, what steps need to be taken. That's what I'm thinking that you're asking.
This, the basics, just, I mean, not the details, but this, just the basics.
Like the preliminary and then the next steps and-
But then they need to be aligned to ensure that. And then if we have any new statutory changes, we, those need, you know, I'm wondering if we're, we're moving here and something we're gonna have to correct. going to have to correct.
And we may be able to look at something in the, the district's not creating a threat assessment manual, and which shall be approved or, when we all approve it, I mean, I think it's, I think we've already approved the threat assessment manual, I mean, Ms. Hummel brought that a while ago, and so, and A, this may already line up.
Right.
And this might be, this is your idea.
Right.
And then just because we're talking about time and immediacy, when we say that the team's going to be headed, and you've got the members of the team headed by the principals.
If, yeah, if, if they're not all available, and the threat seems to be viable and high level, it, they all don't have to be there.
They don't hold it up to 1.26.
Yeah, so, so these people are on-
They want to address that threat as soon as-
Immediately, even if they can't, like, the SRO is off on someone supplement, and he's not there, they can continue. That's true, but if it is where it reaches a higher level, then, I mean, that's in the statute that the SRO or law enforcement, they need to be involved immediately.
Somebody could be-
Yes, okay. Well, somebody, if somebody was changed by the legislature, and now it's, it is passed, then we're supposed to follow it, but how we get the information, is it given us rapidly? We used to have an informal way of getting it, as soon as something passed, we knew it, but how, how does it come out? Who tells us, how do we know we're supposed to follow some procedure that we were following?
Well, I know that I have a, you know, at the end of a legislative session, with Florida School and Parents Association, and over it all, joy frame, and goes over everything with this, and talks about other policy changes that need to happen, there's going to be a share, share of staff, or the administration, administration, because here, that's what-
At least we're here too, they said-
Right, and also, I guess it's going to be need that, but also, they, a lot, a lot of times, I know EMCS and Niola, a lot of those teams, are going to be in our legislative update meetings that week, and we get to-
But it gets passed, because we can follow it, have, who tells us, we can't wait for a lead.
Well, that's, that's pretty much Powers, you know, there's always that lag time, and the legislature always says, you know, this goes into effect July 1, and of 2019, and we're going to be behind the eight ball as far as updating our policies, but we're going to have to follow the law.
But they give us like a date like that, so we're not, oh my gosh, we've got to do this tomorrow morning?
Well, they do a lot of times, you're going to start doing it tomorrow morning, but they do, there's an effective date, you know, when the law's going to affect.
And this is a very fluid area too, I might add, there's, we're getting more information about this every week, so what you may want to do is you may want to move forward with this, and then with the understanding that you know that you're going to be updating it as new information becomes available, because if you wait for it to be completely up to date, you'll never get it adopted.
And Ms. Powers, one of the challenges and frustrations appears to be that we used to get a lot of TAP papers, technical assistance papers, and we don't get them anymore, and those were greatly helpful in being able to have staff prepare where we were going, policies, as well as executing of those, I don't know, when was the last time we had a TAP?
Why aren't we getting it? Because I remember that too.
It's more the Department of Education's not releasing them.
They don't want, yeah, they don't, the Department of Education doesn't want to give you the legal, if something's going to happen, because, I mean, cameras on, but it doesn't matter, they're afraid against it, like everybody else, they put it in writing says you got to use just one, two, and three, and they're all about it.
But it's been passed, and we should be following it, so-
But their hat papers, interpretation.
Yeah, technical assistance papers, so there's an interpretation.
It's because it's been passed, Ms. Powers, that we, there'll be 67 different interpretations.
Yeah, that's true, that's true, I know that, but I know we used to get that information, so if it was passed today, tomorrow morning, we had that information, and we were acting on the information, so, and I think all of us want to be sure that we're covering all the bases that we possibly have.
I'll usually get a notification if something is passed and signed by the governor, and that's immediately, most laws, you know, go into effect either July 1 or they're after that.
This, Doug? Yes, in line with Mr. Dixon, I mean, I would like to get something approved on this policy, and what I would think that there are going to be changes, I believe, I agree with you on that, but that doesn't mean we can't move, it's what we know, we can prove it now, so can't we let Mr. Bradshaw maybe-
Rewrite.
Or will you make these changes, add in there something to reference the threat, the behavioral threat assessment, whatever, the annual, or the board will have this, whatever, and then we can move forward?
Well, remember, this is a workshop, so we just have to come back at a public meet, at a regular meeting, we can still make changes at that point in time, so we can get it approved or advertised, and that's, that's at least on that, on that public hearing, we should have some changes.
But he can bring all the changes there, if you all can agree or disagree, we can make changes, and then we-
And it's not slowing anything down, you're still, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
Okay, you want me to just recap what we just, since we're on the same page?
No, I think we're good on that.
Okay.
Wes has it, you have it, we are-
I got it, okay. And then the next policy is 4.72, homeless students. This matter was also discussed by the Policy Informants Committee in February, the revision is to 1A3, to remove foster care placement from the policy. Students who are under foster care are covered by the ESSA program, which is Every Student Succeeds Act, and this was discovered as part of a grant application, it's just an update to reflect, updating the policy. Glad to answer any questions. Okay. And I think the next item is not actually a workshop per se, but it's a discussion to see if you want to have a, I'll turn it over to Ms. Douglas.
Good morning. I understand that you all want to have a conversation regarding school board policy 5.30, and then the state statute 1003.32 regarding discipline.
Yeah, I guess my question was, you know, when I read this, I guess we're just reviewing the existing policy, but yet, then I understand there were some changes on the law side, is that right? That's why we're, that's why it's before us?
Sorry. I'm not sure, I have the state statute, and I have our school board policy, so I, it's my understanding that you all wanted to have a discussion, that maybe your feelings are that they're not matching, I'm not sure.
I don't recall this, so I apologize for, I didn't remember this being something we brought forward.
I didn't, I didn't remember, you see, I just looked through the policy, through the strikeouts, I was like, is this new? It didn't say it's new, there's, I was kind of curious.
Who put this in here?
I did, but I do have a question, and she's, announce the truth of that. Announce the truth, go sit here.
And we're writing as Ms. Powers.
Wow, did you? It was passed a long time ago, that if a student was disruptive in the classroom, the teacher had the ability to dismiss that student from the classroom, and then certain procedures were followed, and here it also says the same thing, this is being done, I have not heard of anyone doing it recently. So if a student in third grade is disruptive, and the teacher says leave, where's the student go from one thing isn't being done, and then what happens?
Well, I can tell you that that is definitely happening, I've been covering personally a school, Central Ridge Elementary, three to four days a week, and handling discipline calls, and when immediate assistance is called, administration goes, somebody from the leadership team goes, and depending on the incident, we time out, bounce another classroom, call home, in-school suspension, out-of-school suspension, depending on the situation.
Are you talking about removing a student from the classroom permanently?
You don't turn around and bring the child back to the classroom?
We do have that process in place, yes, yes.
That process is by statute too, that if this child is continually disruptive, this teacher can request that that child-
I have that as well.
Remove from their class and place in their own class.
And I think, I think what we're doing is, and I have that same problem, because I've, I've talked to a couple of teachers where they call for administration, child is removed, but because the transition room is open or closed, or the ISS is not available or something like that, they're going to get right back to the teacher's classroom.
Well, I think it, once again, it depends on the situation, and we do have the behavior transition classroom at each elementary school.
They're working now.
Yes, and we do have interventions in place as well, the teachers are required to do interventions depending on the situation, so if a student is removed, there is a process if that teacher's requesting removal of that student, we have a process in place based on statute.
Ms. Count, I think what you're referring to, sometimes when administrator brings the student back, the teacher's not ready, it's not about when the teacher's ready to have the student, it's about when the student's ready to come back, because we're here to educate the student, so when the student's ready to come back, sometimes the teachers aren't always ready to have them, that's an adult problem that the principals need to deal with. When we're ready to, when the student's been dealt with, when the teacher asks the principal or the administrator to deal with the student, they're relinquishing that authority to the principal or their administrator. Once they deal with that student, and they determine that student's ready to go back into the classroom, then that's their decision to bring that student back into the classroom. Some of the teachers you're hearing from aren't ready to have that student yet, that's not, that's not, that's a separate issue.
And when you say removal, there's two things that go along with it, number one, you have a student that is misbehaving or being disruptive, and they call administration, administration takes them out, they get the student under control, call them down on everything else, whatever that issue was, they put them back in the classroom, and there's also a statute that says that a teacher can request that if a student is continually disruptive like that, have him removed from the class and placed in a different classroom setting.
Right, yeah, that does happen to-
And if, if a different classroom said, say, it's ESE student, which is how we specify, say, an ESE set.
Then you have to go through an IEP, a meeting to, have the IEP team determine what setting that ESE kid is.
And if there's no, no setting, it seems to be the best setting.
But someone has to just deal with it, because you don't have any options with the ESE kids.
I think that seems like a lot of days, that just, when I'm in, in the schools, the principal has them, assistant principal will have them, the guidance counselor, they're, I mean, you, you all are, just as Ms. Douglas talked about, it's, they're responding, I've been on tours where we're responding to a classroom and-
Any classrooms we have at the elementary are not, they're not geared for teachers just send their kids there whenever they're, they're having an episode with them, those are geared, and I'll let Trish explain that, it's a little bit different than, they're not timeout rooms.
Right, and also with ESE kids, you have to be careful too, because under their IEP, there's a specific amount of classroom time and classroom settings and minutes that they have to look on certain things, so you can't just keep sending them out of the room, because, but those kids are usually our ESE teacher, and so they know what the, you know, what their IEP is, their behavior plan, and all the other things that the IEP team is, and are the IEP team, and so I would hope that's-
Trish, I never had this problem.
That's because you have Ms. Douglas's, I think, that's the students.
I know, even in your days, but I know that teachers get frustrated, and they whip the top out of the room, you know?
And we do have processes in place, we have what we call problem-solving team meetings on students, they don't have to have an IEP, a 504, if we have a student that has a behavior need, then we do have a process where we meet with the leadership team and the teacher, we develop interventions, we have behavior choices at the district level that will go in, help model, coach, I know our assistant principals go into the classroom as well, and will model some behavior intervention strategies for the teachers, so we do have those processes in place.
I think what we need to remember right now is that we just said it with the threat assessment team, we don't, we can't put a lot of the actions in policy, that's in the code of conduct, so really, some of the things that we've just talked about is in the code of conduct, and I, you don't want to make the policy too specific, because there's always a gray area with a kid.
And in our school board policy 5.30, on page three of five on 5.32, it talks about the code of ethics, and if you go back to the code of ethics, it is our responsibility as educators to ensure that we are doing what's best for every single student, and that we are making that reasonable effort, so if you go back to that, it is our responsibility to do what's best for every child, and I think we're covered.
But then I, I went to statute, the 1003.31, which was the laws in front, and it does say that each school board superintendent and principal shall fully support the authority of the teachers and the bus drivers, and so I think sometimes when we make the decision, we've got to, we've got to make sure that our teachers feel that they're being supported, and I think that's where we have some issues.
But that can't conflict with law, because you, because we have a federal law that says a student is in a-
There are only twenty people that do not feel like they're supported.
Right, but I think that we need to explain to them.
The thing we should keep in mind is our job is to educate students and to change discipline, a lot of teachers want to focus on getting even and punishing students, that's not what our, that's not what discipline's for, we want to change behavior, and we want to teach the student, and we want to get the student back in the classroom so we can educate the student, it's not about getting even or a certain degree of punishment, it's about educating.
And there's something about the time of view.
And it is a reset, we are about being proactive and changing our students' behaviors, and we have put in professional development in place, all of our elementary schools are utilizing Sanford-Harmony, it's a social emotional tool, resource that we have that really cultivates strong relationships in our classrooms, so we have that in place, we're providing training to our assistant principals, we're providing training to our bus drivers and all of this, that's in place, we're doing code of conduct modules for our elementary world, so we are putting some things in place to help support.
We do see a lot more disruptive behavior from some of our younger elementary students than we ever have in the past.
Yeah, but I understand that, I checked with my little elementary schools, I just had my Saks meetings with both of them, and they say their transition rooms are working, so that's a thing that we started new this year.
Well, again, we have to remember too, federal law states that the students must be in the least restrictive environment, so we, and that's what I think Mr. Mullin and Ms. Douglas is also sharing, is that doesn't mean we can just bounce kids, and so it's not that we are not wanting to support teachers, that's why I see administrators running constantly when, when they're called to a classroom, but they can't just simply drag that student out of that classroom, there is a process, and it has to be followed, and that's, that's challenging, because, I mean, we all have also spoken to the parents of the kids in that other classroom, that say, well, why did all of the other kids get emptied out of the classroom, and the, and the behavior rules stayed in, well, there are valid reasons why we have to do that, and I just, Ms. Douglas, I commend you, I have, you know, I've spent a lot of time with you over the years since my kids were five years old, and you, your team, and now you're leading it, it's not, this isn't easy stuff we're dealing with every day, these are hard things, and, and you step up.
And, yeah, you don't have a policy where a teacher cannot put their hands on the student if they're going to protect other students, correct? I mean, I get this concept that-
No, we did not, because the statute says that a teacher can use reasonable force to protect themselves or another, or another person from injury, from injury.
Right, from injury, but, and I will say, because we've had this situation, when teachers do that, and a parent or somebody makes a complaint that it was unnecessary, there's going to be an investigation, and the teacher's going to be removed while that investigation takes place, unfortunately, that has happened several times this year, so as long as they-
I understand.
You know, it, it's a bad situation for a teacher, I'd be the first to tell you that.
And if you want to go back to DOE, what we were talking about earlier, what the statute says that, and it says that the Department of Education shall adopt standards to tell you what reasonable force is, and so there was a paper that was done in 1997, and it's not been updated, and it goes on for 15 pages, and says that each individual's situation is different, based upon the fact, you'll have to determine what reasonable force is at that time, depending on circumstances.
So, I mean, that's, sometimes teachers want us to give them all those things they can do and they can't do, and as Mr. Bradshaw just said, the situation's going to warrant that, we can't predict what every situation is, we do teach certain holds to our staff at Crest CPI, and some of our administrators at other schools, so that we have those holds, everybody is trained in that, because not everybody is in a position where they have to use those holds.
And anytime those are used, they have to report those to the state, is that right?
So the situation, because I too, I know Ms. Count, I think, had brought it up originally about the discipline, or about the elementary school rise in these behavior problems, and you know, is there more we can do?
High school teachers had a problem until I got on this board.
Are we doing enough, or is there more that we can do to help with those issues? What's the answer when you have these runners or these?
The answer is, we've added more pre-K units, because we're trying to get the students in younger, so that we can try to change those behaviors before they get into- in younger, so that we can try to change those behaviors before they get into kindergarten or first grade. It gives us more time to work with them at a younger age, so we've added pre-K units. We've also, the schools, when you talk about the behavior units, the schools weren't given an extra unit to do that. The schools did that this year with their own unit, allegations. Some may not be able to do it next year if they don't get another unit, because their class sizes are too big. So even though it's been successful in its work, we don't know how that's going to come out next year if their units don't, if we're not able to afford them an extra unit. Because it's all, it's all based on their class size, their ability to do that. So staffing is certainly one of those things. It takes staff to do that. Those students that have those behaviors need almost one-on-one attention. We're not funded or staffed to provide one-on-one attention, so we try to be creative in how we do that. We have a line item in the budget for transition aides that will send schools to work with those students one-on-one. We'll send them temporary help. We have some behavior specialists in the district that we'll send out to those schools. But the one thing that would make a big difference is more staff. And unfortunately, we don't have the funding to provide more staff.
Or the teachers that are coming behind to help that, which is that...
Well, and another piece of all this goes back to the staff development. And we are hiring teachers who are alternatively certified. We have long-term subs throughout our buildings, just making sure that we're providing good tools and strategies for them.
How are we including the parents of this particular child? Is misbehavior, do we have some program, do we have some plan to go out to the parents?
We have what we call problem solving team meetings, and we invite the parents to those meetings. And we develop intervention plans, behavior plans for those students. The parents are involved.
And Ms. Powers, will you have control of that first day if that student needs an assistant?
We offer all kinds of assistance for parents, whether they'll take us up on it. And that's one of the things that has come out, we did, we do a survey with our staff, our students and parents. And Ms. Douglas's, I guess we titled one, said a lot of the surveys come out. But anyway, overwhelmingly, we hear from teachers that we're not holding parents accountable for student discipline. Parents aren't accountable to us. You know, we're doing the best we can to try to offer support and resources for the parent. But at the end of the day, I can't force a parent to take their child for counseling. I can't force a parent to do anything with their child outside of school. Those are, so those are the barriers that we run into. So it's not an easy fix. We're doing the best we can with the tools that we, minimum tools that we have. And sometimes parents that are not responsive, they're wanting to do anything to change their child's behavior, they'd be more, they'd be happier if the school would change their expectations.
Sorry? Yes, part of our contract with some of our parents that's signed, I looked up the statute and 103.04 is student conduct and parental involvement. And I know we have the contract that a lot of our elementary schools have, but there is a statute that says that parents must partner with us to discipline their children. And maybe we should look at that statute language.
But the problem is if they don't...
There's no recourse if they don't follow that.
And a lot of times when we, when we develop...
We'll have good legislation out there.
Yeah. But I think... When we develop the plans at school, we encourage and copy visuals for the parents to utilize at home. And we can put them in their hands, but unfortunately, we can't go to their house and make sure it's implemented.
And I, ever since I started this, I still have a tremendous problem when we talk about educating our children, that we remove nineteen or twenty kids from a classroom and let one kid tear it up. And there's nineteen kids not getting an education. And neither is the one that's tearing up the classroom. So I really would like to figure out how we can remove that disruptive child and leave the other ones in the classroom.
Oh, you'd have to ask a staff member to physically remove them?
Yeah.
So, and then, again, you're asking a staff member to open themselves up to that?
Well, and possibly, you know, with a, with a voice and tone of voice, you know, that disruptive child may willingly leave the room with...
Our administrators try that. We don't, that's not the first step, is to evacuate the room with the other students.
That's the last resort.
That's the last resort. That's none of the student that's disrupting the classroom is not, is not able to be removed.
And we have de-escalation strategies we practice and utilize with our students as well, and teachers. But sometimes, in the heat of the moment, sometimes strategies to de-escalate...
And what is impressive is that the whole school takes a role in it. I've seen the custodians be a person that maybe that that student has a connection with, and so they, administration has said, you know what, you can spend time with that, you know, using positive reinforcement to try and have that, whether it's spending time with a nurse, the administrator, playing a game, the SRO. Everybody becomes involved trying to find out how to deal with those three or four students that...
It's not unusual at the beginning of the school year for elementary principals and I E Ps to spend their entire day with one student. It's not unusual.
And that means they're not able to do the other critical things that that school needs done curriculum-wise and overseeing those.
But they call Mr. Mullin and he knows what they're doing.
And I will tell you that we are typically successful with these students after a few years. And it takes a few years. That doesn't sound like it's success, but these high flyers or disruptive students that we get at three or four years old or five years old, usually by the time they're in second or third grade, they're starting to get them calmed down to where they're able to spend all day in school.
I looked at the attendance and it looks like our eighth graders are taking over renaissance. So it is...
Well, we've always, middle school's been, always been...
Yeah.
I know we have this before us, Ms. Douglas, thank you for coming. Is there anything though, specific to the policy that we are proposing or asking for that's within our power of legislation?
I don't think it's the policy. I think it's if we need to do anything to support the teachers or the bus drivers, it needs to be in the code of conduct, not in policy.
Well, that code of conduct is policy.
Yeah, but stay, this language needs to stay as...
As wayed.
As broadly defined as possible.
I don't know how you, I don't know how you tighten it down. If you really want to do something, call your Florida senators and U.S. congressmen and have them work on changing some of the, some of the laws at the federal level, because sometimes what the federal government makes us do is, for funding is different than what you may choose to do.
I wanted to take off to the, Ms. Powers, you asked about parent involvement. And tonight, we have a parent night that we have our, let me, let me back up a second. We have a parent night tonight to be at La Canta Primary School. And all of our transition teachers are doing workshops with parents. So they've reached out to all of the students that they work with, either in their classroom or in other classrooms, because many of our transition teachers push into classrooms and work with students in classrooms. And they are all doing different breakout sessions. And they're making takes and visual schedules and sentry items and different things like that. And it's tonight at La Canta Primary.
What time?
We are going to start at 5:30 as dinner. And the Citrus County Educated Foundation is providing pizza and salad and drinks and cookies for dinner for all of our families. And we have thirty-eight families that RSVP throughout the district. So that's very exciting. So we have families that have RSVP from all eleven elementary schools. So I hope they actually show up and say, and our transition teachers are working very hard. And our principals and our assistant principals are encouraging parents, talking to parents in car line, making personal phone calls, genuinely reaching out to them, asking them to come and be a part of the night tonight. So it's going to be an exciting event. It is going to be...
Trish, could you, could you address what we're doing next year to, to...
This is Dickie, Mrs. Humble, and I have a team together that are working on creating code of conduct modules that are appropriate for our elementary students. We have one set of modules for pre-K through second grade and one for third through fifth grade. This team has taken the code of conduct and really tore it apart and created some graphic visuals for our students and teachers. They, this team, I don't want to forget anybody, Dan Koch, Megan Spelitch, Mary Leonard, Megan Furnas, Jessica Hurley, Stacy Elliott Lewis will be presenting to our assistant principals on Thursday, these modules to get their input and feedback. And we will have those as resources for our elementary schools in the fall.
I understand that.
And so every student and every teacher in the elementary world will all hear the same thing. And of course, we can share those at our SAC meetings as well and at any parent meetings.
Trish, can you also touch on Sanford Harmony, where else can you talk about that next, next year in elementary?
Good morning again. Sanford Harmony is the social emotional and social skill program that we have trained all of the elementary schools in with the modules. It's K through, I don't know, I think it's K one and then, anyway, they're broken up depending on their age. So one of the, or two of the main things that they focus on is what they call a meetup, where the teacher has the class together every morning for about five minutes. They, they can ask a question, you know, the children are chosen like by the teacher. They can play like a little game, how everybody gets chosen. And then they set goals as a classroom. It just, they learn a lot about each other and within these meetups, they're learning social skills, like being respectful of others, making eye contact, listening to others, et cetera. The other one is called buddy-up, where you are buddied up with another student in the classroom. It doesn't have to be somebody that your best friend, you don't have to hang out with them during the day. But it's teaching them to be aware of others, to be aware of others' feelings, so that if you notice that who your buddy is for this week is maybe on the playground and they're sitting all alone, you would go over out of respect for them and be empathetic towards others and say, hey, is there something wrong? Or are you having a bad day? Maybe just to give them a word of encouragement. And so that part of the social skill, just being aware when others maybe aren't feeling so well, you know, trying to include others. But again, you know, it doesn't mean they have to eat lunch together, any of that, just being acceptable of others. So, and then the other part of Sanford Harmony, if they choose to go in further in depth, there's a lot of little cards where they can ask questions. I mean, it's very comprehensive in terms of social, emotional and social. But our focus for next year is that the expectation and requirement is going to be that every elementary school do, you know, in their classrooms, do a meetup and that they do the buddy-up. So that, you know, it's not going to be anything that's optional. So everybody's going to come together with their class every morning, have those discussions. Like I said, it takes anywhere from three to five minutes. It's something that's very quick.
The training?
Yes. Ms. Douglas was saying that they have the training already scheduled for the new teachers that are coming in. But it's been a great, great program. It's cost the district nothing in terms of the materials and all of that.
And the middle school principals are also working on integrating a character education program into, they're looking at either P E or possibly one of their civics classes. But they're going to integrate something into the middle school curriculum as well. Our focus is on trying to educate children and trying to change behaviors through educating them. And that's what we're trying to start at the elementary, even at a younger age.
And for the old timers, Ms. Humble worked with Rick Roach, the school board member out of Orange County, was friends with Pat Deutschman on that harmony programs and doing that. And thank you, Ms. Humble, because that was...
Good luck.
That was huge savings and well needed.
And it's very good, it's very effective if it's used continuously. Actually, I'm meeting next Friday with Mr. Rollin to go over the sixth grade component of this, to try, you know, to implement some of that. Will be part of that social skills and character building that Mr. Mullin was talking about.
Our options are very limited. We either educate students, change their behavior, or we can suspend them out of school. And I promise you, while they're sitting at home suspended out of school, nobody is teaching them to act any better than they did before they left.
Joe Crowley suggested years ago that we should not suspend them to home, we should suspend them to the armory for ten days. And Mr. Mullin would remember maybe that daily routine and then homework would be part of it. But I thought that was a brilliant idea, ten days at the armory.
There's a lot of ways to solve the problem that we're able to, but we can't.
Well, I want to add something. I've known Kit for many, many years, and she's worked on these projects, she's telling me about it, and she's really, really worked on it. She's very serious about making sure these are implemented. And you go sometimes to other districts and they have these programs they're going to go through and they're going to introduce, but they treat it like, okay, let's introduce one, do a quick little process, finish good. That's how they treat it.
Very flippant.
Very flippant. Ms. Mullin, I know you're the same, y'all don't treat it that way. You never have. You treat it as something that's going to benefit the children, you work as hard as you can on it, and that's certain for sure.
The modules, Ms. Douglas is talking about too, they included bus discipline, bus behavior, and even bus stop safety is going to be addressed in those training modules for the students.
Great, Ms. Humble, Ms. Douglas, super, super job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So...
I thought we were going back to Steph.
Oh, no. Now, what I have here is the notes from our code of conduct review committee as well as the code of conduct for our next, sorry, sorry, sorry. Code of Conduct for next year. But they all, they're all the same, we just put the names on them, so that's why I was standing it out. And if you'll take a moment and open your folder, on the left-hand side of your folder, these are the notes from the review committee.
I wonder if, because I saw that school board, no representative, and we always go, so what happened?
I'm not, I'm not sure. We sent the email out multiple times inviting someone. I know that there was a conflict with a particular school board member. This was back in December. So we sent the email out in October and November.
So in the future, I know you might be there, would you pass on that, be sure there's a school board representative there, because we always go with something active there.
Yes, ma'am. I do know that, that, I do know that a particular member normally attends and that particular member happened to be, had a conflict. That I do know.
I believe it was the week of the F S B A when you all were in Tampa. I think Camp Orlando, I don't know where, which place. But I believe it was...
We were getting at the court.
Right. I believe it was during that timeframe that nobody could come and, and when that was bound up. So we'll make sure that in the future, Ms. Greco or Ms. Humble know that we kind of stay away from that particular week, because it's normally down the first weekend.
Thank you. I knew there was a conflict, but that's all I can remember and I apologize. Thank you, Dr. Ebert.
You know, the thing, the two on here, there's no student representatives.
Yes, there were.
There were multiple.
There were, there were multiple ones there.
Okay. They just didn't, they don't have...
There's four or five.
I mean, they have one, at least one from each high school.
Right. They have...
Her name should have been included.
And you can, they all ask how come they came over close.
Please, man, very proud of you.
They are, I mean, they, they do ask a great question.
They have very difficult...
Was Buddy, I forgot the buddy's name, but maybe that, this was before, maybe he was higher.
Yes, it was.
Yeah. Maybe next time he can also be on there.
So on this on random notes page, anything that is highlighted, anything that's in red, we'll all back up. Let me just back up to the beginning. Anything that's in black, that was sent to us by the schools. So those are recommended, recommendations from the committee or from the schools or from the S A E Cs. And we got feedback from each, each area. And they were listed in order by page number. Anything in red is what we discussed. Those are our notes. Anything highlighted in yellow was actually a change made in the code of conduct. So on the right-hand side, you do have the 2019, 2020 recommended code of conduct. And the highlights coincide. So for example, the first one in the notes page, it discussed that the code of conduct will be distributed electronically on our district's website with limited quantities to each school and a hard copy. That was a conversation that the... That was a conversation that the committee had. Mr. Bradshaw did say that there was no legal ramifications to doing that. We do not have to have anything signed off by the parents, you know, saying that they have read the code of conduct. It is just an, it is expected that parents know that we have one and that they make themselves familiar with that. So, are there, is there any questions about districting it electronic and giving minimum compensation?
You know, I only wonder if, if it's not difficult to add or if there's value to it is on the iPads is putting it as a, a link that is on there that's, you know, just like the other one, just put it as the menu of links that includes it. I know that it won't be regular reading, but even if it does allow, it's kind of like when, you know, Mr. Bradshaw, we later sometimes say to them, you know, did you remember Mr. Bradshaw talking to you about that particular thing? It, it just gives us maybe some, some of that to, you know, or, or maybe they'll click on it and say whatever. Just, it's just a thought. And I don't have strong feelings, it's just, it was just a thought.
Ms. Androwski did remember us having conversation about that.
Okay.
Absolutely. So if you want to go through this, on page, actually on page three of the code of conduct, you will see at the bottom that there is an item, the school safety hotline. It is in blue font. It will not be in blue font in the actual printed code of conduct. The reason it's in blue font is to bring your attention to anything that we didn't necessarily discuss in the code of conduct, at the code of conduct review committee. However, it is something that needed to be changed or adjusted the wording. So for example, this was something that came up later that needed to be updated. And this is just having the talking about the crime stoppers and Fortify Florida. That was not in the previous code of conduct. Well, some of it was, but not all of it, not Fortify Florida. On page five, we updated the information with the school grades and the money per student. On page seven, there was a recommendation made that we adjust the bullets, how the bullets are in order there by relevance. We tried it by alphabetical order, that was one of the suggestions, but then it put illness of student kind of in the middle and most students who are absent from school are absent due to an illness. So we felt that should stop, stay at the top. So we adjusted it by relevance. Page nine, we just changed the wording to district student services. On page 11, there was a lot of conversation about including information where parents can obtain the files, such as the student authorization form. And that was something that Ms. Androwski said that they were working on with the website. And so we changed the wording in the code of conduct to match what's on the website because the links were in a different order and the code of conduct didn't have the website. So that is there. There was also a concern to request the update to make parent and guardians aware of what school health services, what, what school health services are provided, who is responsible for that oversight of the health services. And so per Florida statute, a student can be exempt from school health services if his or her parent or guardian requests such exemption in writing. So that is what is added on page 11 at the top there, that entire, those two paragraphs.
And why was that, tell me one more time, why that was added, that, that is sent?
We wanted to outline the statute clearly. It's a statute, it was statute wording. We did not have it in there in the previous code of conduct.
Is that, that's typical where this information goes in the code of conduct?
I think it was, I think it was more so that you probably got a better chance of parent manuals, the code of conduct, we do it on more than the policy manual, so the ideas are embedded in there.
And the code of conduct is defined as a, as a policy.
Code of conduct is a policy.
Further down the page, under medications, the suggestion was to change the wording from drugs to medications.
Good suggestion.
It's changed.
Don't give the kids any ideas.
A little further down the page, you just see a highlighted parents and students help services tab, that just highlights where we made the change, so that it was consistent with our district website.
Where in the code, I, I thought it was in the same area that while we have prohibitions, we have like sunscreen things of that nature. Where is that? Okay, one more way. Okay. Then yeah, then there's no.
Right. We also have a section where it discusses under the zero tolerance, that sunscreen is not considered a medication falls under zero tolerance.
I just didn't know, and it doesn't have to be this year, but I wonder if maybe some of that should go under health, if, if we're kind of developing a health. Because it does talk about, for example, in the same areas, students are not allowed to carry, but then you wouldn't know where they could carry stuff till the, till the other areas. And again, it isn't a this year, it may just be a thought.
Just that this section is just a thought.
Yeah.
As we move through the code of conduct, the next change is on page 21. This was just reworded to follow state statute.
You know, I noticed something because the blue looks so nice and it stands out so nice. If we are going to start getting to doing it more digitally, I wonder if there is a value, and again, not this year, but maybe as it's going here to colorize some of those areas and where we have, you know, maybe instead of being just bold, it's red. I mean.
Like the safety line.
See, I knew it was a brilliant idea.
Just, just something, yeah.
I, I, yes, Mr. Kennedy, I agree as well. And we also discussed where we say to go to, go to the school website and go under this tab, and this tab, hey, there's links as well. We discussed that. That's it for our changes.
I can just address that while we're hoping that with Board Docs, we can house the, the student code conduct within Board Docs, so it will have the same searchable features as our policy manual, as well as our student progression plan. We're hoping we can house that. Initially, that is not our, our plan initially is to do the policy manual, but then our hopes are that we can use Board Docs to house those other documents as well. But, you know, we'll have to get some time to get there. But when we do that, we can hopefully add some of those features as well as meeting ADA compliance, because we want to make sure if we are color coding, what things are we able to do without making sure we're addressing the ADA compliance components as well. So just be cognizant of that as we go through.
And Jean, I'm going to revisit something. It was years ago and the assistant principal that worked all summer on a poster for our classrooms at Christopher High School, took all of these disciplinary interventions and very similar to what we do for the zero tolerance, our first code, first offense, second offense, third offense. And on the poster, he took all of these disciplinary actions and he put them, I think in four or five different categories on this poster and said, if you do this, this is what's going to happen to you first, five, second, third time. And if you do this, this is going to happen. And I'm going to tell you, that poster worked only because the administration was faithful to it. And, and so sometimes we have a problem because from, from administrators, things change. We consider threatening to blow up schools and, and kill kids and they're getting three days ISS.
No, Ms. Council, that, that would not happen.
That does not.
Yes. They'd be others, that would not happen.
I know, because I think we, even though they were crying and saying they were just missing, I think we.
We get a school threat, they're wrong.
Yeah.
I can tell you that years ago, that the board had a discussion about having makers like that.
Really? I'll tell you, it worked at Christopher High School. All we had to do was point to the posters. Must have been some legislator that said we couldn't do it because it worked.
No, but each, each, each school also has their own autonomy, just like the classroom. So you don't want to, you, you want to be careful in our rules.
Oh, I'm saying, this was just done at our school. I mean, schools could do that, but.
I don't think it's prohibited.
It's not prohibited as long as it's on by, by law, like we still use zero tolerance policies, but I mean, it could be made as far as, I think the list is like numbers, like two, three, four offenses, like this designated is 11-1, it's either in-school suspension or out of school suspension.
It'd be totally different for an elementary school that might lose it, but it, I'll tell you, it worked at Christopher High School. We didn't have problems. Retired.
You know, it's 21, you've got spike necklaces. Necklaces is in yellow.
Yes.
So we've got a bunch of spiked earrings. I don't know where those are.
Take a horn and put it through your ear?
Or like a, or like a dog, like a dog collar. Do you know, they have the little spikes on them and things like that. Yes, ma'am. And it's highlighted because it said necklace, it was singular, and the suggestion was to make it plural. And so we did highlight it because we did make it plural. So it was a change. Yes, ma'am.
Got my attention.
Shades are there for this one.
Yes.
Thank you, sir. So our parents. I was more scared for father than I was anybody at the school district.
That's why you'll take the links a bit and call your dad.
Exactly. Every time. That's why, that's why it was, continue, I mean, not calling my father.
Hello, Ms. Tammy.
Good morning.
Does anybody have a question, any questions from the, from the school staff or the general fund statement? Not because of Ms. Wilson, and the importance of what she does.
I told him I was starting to take it personal.
Well, good morning.
Morning.
Bill? Yes, all right. This is going to be a team effort, I think, with Mr. Bishop's staff and myself. Well, this didn't come out very good. This is just the calendar and this day is on the calendar today to share with you where we are with the budget and the five-year work plan. The committees are supposed to meet this week and hopefully we will have a budget. I think we have to have one by the end of next week, I think is when we have to have one. So they do have to have it on the floor 72 hours before they can vote. We don't know how this governor will react with his line item veto power that he has. And so this is a new experience for us all. I think Scott had just come into office when I started doing budgets, so the governor for all of us. I'm going to go over the general fund budget to start with. For most of my estimates, I've used the governor's. He's kind of in the middle between the House and the Senate, and that's kind of where we had started the budget year anyway, was with his numbers. So first, we have our FTE here, where's a slight increase at this point, about 0.38% for the weighted FTE. We still are not back up to the days of 09, 10, when we were at 16,700, we weren't there, but we are, we are growing a little bit. So this is just a little graphical depiction for you to see, we went down, we were down at our lowest in 13, 14, 14, 15, and we're gradually going back up in our numbers. So here, of course, our FTE gears are base student allocation and where we stand with that. You notice, of course, from 17, 18, 18, 19, we went up, no dollars. The governor has us at 50. I think the House has us a little less, the Senate has us a little more. So with the governor's numbers, we're up about one and a half percent on our base funding. And this is a depiction of the FT, the base student allocation and the total FEFP funding. So you can see the base student allocation compared to, to that, kind of flows, flows together. And I brought this to you at the board meeting two weeks ago, the comparison of the governor's budget and the House and Senate's budget, just wanting it to be out here again for you. Are there any questions on this? We went over it before, but I'd be happy to.
Just that I think we need to remember with the governor's budget, a lot of that, that 88 in the FTFB is best and brightest, and it's a categorical.
Yes. They all have put best and brightest in the budget this year, all three of them, as you can tell, the governor's is quite a bit more than everyone else's, so.
So when you take that out, it's a, it's a significant difference.
Yes.
And really, the House and the Senate's both are in better situation than the governor's, I think, in that regard.
And the Senate did leave the digital allocation alone. The House decreased it some. And then save schools is always on everyone's mind. The Senate increased and the House did decrease that. So hopefully somewhere between the governor and Senate's budget would be a nice place to land. This gives the, the bottom of the spreadsheet. That spreadsheet is too big to fit on one slide, so if we look, we get down to the bottom numbers, we were at 109.8 million this last year. The governor has us at 112.5, the Senate at 114.5, and then the House has us down to 111.75. So quite a disparity between the Senate and House, as we've spoken before. So like I said, for what I'm going to bring forward to you now is I'm using the governor's numbers. Any questions? All right. We want to talk about our millages. The, you know, our property values go up, our millages seem to go down. So we don't seem to, our property tax money coming in does not really increase overall. And as you can tell, 11, 12 was probably our high year of our local required effort of the millages landing at 5.527. And in 18, 19, we were down to 4.079, which is the lowest. The governor, the House and the Senate are lower than that this year. So even though our property values are going up, our millages are going down. Now, our capital improvement is still at 1.5, so that with property values increasing, our capital fund is getting a little bit more money every year. So here's a depiction of the taxable values, how they are flowing compared to the millage. And you see at the end here that our, our value's going up, millage is going down. So they'll probably start crossing next year, that last bar graph there.
On the taxable values, with the closing of the fossil fuel plants and the coming online of the gas plants, I'm assuming that we're going to be maybe a wash. We might be a couple of dollars more, but not a whole lot.
Nothing, nothing drastic, nothing enough to.
Not really. I think it's going to be on the plus side, but not a whole lot.
And that's what, that's what it appears to be. So nothing ventured, nothing gained, but hopefully we're, you know, at least not going the opposite direction as we did when Unit Three went down. And when we lost our discretionary capital outlay. And when we lost our discretionary capital outlay, critical capital outlay.
So this next slide, this shows us our budget for the last ten years that we've had, based on our taxes. Of course, the greatest part is our local required effort. Our basic discretionary, that's the point seven-four-eight. So that does, we get a little bit more every year that our values go up. And the capital improvement, one point five. And as Mr. Kennedy just talked about, our critical capital outlay we had from oh-nine to the twelve, thirteen year. So that's a couple, you know, that's two and a half million a year that we lost after that. And if you look, our highest year was in oh-eight, oh-nine. On this graph, fifty-seven million, we're down to thirty-nine million. That's quite a big drastic change. That's eighteen million dollars lost in tax revenue that we're bringing in now than we were ten years ago.
And again, I don't think the average person understands that because they're getting hit the other way with, you know, publicity.
All right, so here's our taxes budgeted versus how much we collect. And we usually do collect over a hundred percent. As of April fifteenth, we were almost to, we were about ninety percent. That we had collected about ninety percent of our taxes budgeted this year. So we do very well into collecting our taxes. Okay, so this is the big, the big sheet we're all always waiting for. We have a couple of columns here I'd like for you to pay attention to. The yellow column is where I'm projecting that will end, end the year. This is very fluid because things come up and things happen. But based on where we're at right now, I did base these off what had happened as of March thirty-first. We're looking at using about a million dollars of our fund balance this year, which is, is not bad. But as we go into next year, the final, the last column, this is based on the governor's budget. And basically, until we really have our true budget, it's very hard to, to do this. But we've done the best that we could. So we put in here the increased revenue from the governor, which was about two million dollars increase. And then our expenses have increased by almost six million. And that's based on, we have our first, we've had our first HR push, which is always, I don't want to say the worst. It's always the largest. It's always the one we don't have, the, the teachers retired yet. We don't have, you know, usually you have a lot of teachers retiring after now. And as those come in, Ms. Swain will take out those teachers that are at the top of the scale. We budget in an average, I think, a five-year experience, we budget in for that. And so we had a little leeway there. These are all the positions that have been requested. This is, this is the dream big budget.
Tammy, in the, the yellow column, that five hundred thousand should that be for self-insurance? Because we'll spend the five hundred, hundred K scholarship.
Yes.
So that should be down.
Right, the five, well, we took it out in the yellow column. We took out the five hundred thousand reserve for self-insurance claims. Because the auditors have made comments this last year, why are we still reserving when our fund is doing well? So we've, we've taken it out of the reserves, which does help our percentage a little bit at the end. Is that what you wanted me to refer to?
What is this red one?
I put that in red because our policy is three. Now, remember, this is always our worst, our worst case. Like I said, the dream big budget. This is if we can have every position we wanted and everything that everybody absolutely wanted. We have cut nothing at this point. Of course, we don't know whose budget is going to pass. If the House has passed, then that percentage would be lower. If the Senate passed, that percentage would be higher. You know, we did, I did take into account the best and brightest, but that's reserved on the other side. So that's really a wash. That's not giving us any extra money. The governor has re, um.
But the Houses has the best and brightest at about eight hundred thousand or less.
Yes, yes.
So that would increase, that actually would increase us once it washes out, the percentage, wouldn't it?
Well, no, because I have budgeted in. We have to budget the other side. We have to budget for the, the best and brightest being spent.
Okay.
Does that make sense? The revenue comes in, but it goes right back out.
Right. I was thinking though, because as a result of that, though, the, the base, the base of the general was higher, though.
Well, it would reduce the expenditure side.
Right. And that's what I mean by that. And then the Senate, if, which they're, still, still, the House has made it clear, they purposefully did not include the compression funding. So that's an portion that we, we should expect, it looks like, in the numbers to come back in.
They don't like compression in the House, but they want to come up with new formulas. Too late to come up with a new formula, so.
They're going to do something.
They'll put something in compression dollars.
They're always to come up with a formula, not until January next year.
Right.
So they believe that they'll put some money back in the compression. Tammy, do you have a list of the new expenses?
Yes.
That's coming. That's, well, a couple of slides down, okay. All right. Here are significant expenditure increases. We have our third year of the negotiated salaries for the teachers. And we've already promised them that. We have steps and raises for our support staff. The FRS, we don't have a final number of what that contribution will be, but that will go up. We have to increase our budget for a board match every year for our self-insurance. This includes the additional guardian positions that you had voted on last meeting. And these are additional tech tosses positions that were requested. These are all the positions the schools have requested during staffing that, when they met with Ms. Swain and the executive team. All the positions are put in here. Our property casualty insurance is looking to go up about four hundred thousand. Due to the many hurricanes that we've had. Fuel is going up, therefore, energy costs are increasing. And then just normal, you know, cost of loading increase. We have site licenses and softwares that we have. The more, the more of these that we have, the more expensive they get every year, so.
You have all these already in that budget.
These are, these are budgeted as best as we can, yes.
So she's put all of this in there. So again, this is the worst of the worst.
Right.
Okay? Guardians, I think that's what, about four hundred thousand dollars.
I believe so.
Yes, four hundred thousand. You're simply right. This is the worst of the worst on the revenue side, too. They didn't, so.
Right. I didn't, I didn't go with the Senate because I didn't want to, I'd rather give you the worst. So if we get the House's budget, then we have to come back and see where we're.
We're going to have to go back and look at cutting positions because I can't come up with three million dollars by cutting post-graduates. So we're going to have to take the request from the schools, all of these new positions. Because these are things that, of course, are put in the budget. We're going to have to go back to the schools and look at cutting positions out to the schools.
You can see the one that's up there now. We're going to cut a couple of million dollars out of the budget. It's got to be cut from the big blue area.
That's sixty-two percent of our general fund budget in salaries for this.
And as you know, we even think of Mr. Rollins' position, one of them filled out this year because we've asked him to remain in the middle school. So again, that service is going to take a huge shift. I'm not having the director of secondary. But, you know, we've got to make sure that he can do the best we can for the schools, so.
But is, were those, I'm assuming those figures are not in the previous line budget that we showed? The, that showed the less than two percentage.
They're in there.
They, they're already budgeted in there.
They're budgeted in there.
As are, I'm assuming, and I know this isn't an easy to know number, but as are all of our staffing positions.
Correct.
That are not going to be filled, that we know in a year. I mean, we were able to, unfortunately, unfortunately, the only way we were able to give our step last year or our negotiated was because we didn't have those positions filled. I think that represented the biggest portion of that.
But the reality is, as a, as a staff, we have to budget for that.
And I, no, and I realize that. I just mean, that's how it flows out at the end of the day.
Yes.
And, and I believe, and I was just looking at my notes, but I know somebody in here can tell us. With that last, this third year's negotiated, is the one, is the one-time adjustment? Is that what it's referred to?
The market.
The market adjustment. With that, that puts us at a first year's teacher salary at?
Thirty-eight.
I want to say thirty-eight-two.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-eight-four. Which I know in comparison, not that long ago, put us at or above almost every geographical area right around us. Competitive-wise.
We're not above.
Starting next year?
I would be sure they would be increasing also.
Oh, was it? Okay. That's what I, I didn't have. Yes, starting next year.
At the beginning salary percentage would be thirty-eight-four.
Yeah, that was it.
I'll write you back to the screen and just so you have an idea of what to compare. If you compare the first column to the yellow column, those are your actuals. That's where we actually ended up at the end of eighteen, is the very first column. And then the yellow column is the projected, where we're, we're projecting where you're going to end up. Okay? And then the next, the second column that says original budget, that's what you would compare to the, the final column, the governor's column. Okay? Just so you kind of, if you want to go back and look at this later and say, okay, when am I looking at apples to apples? Okay? Any more questions on this page?
Yep.
Yes, Mr. Ross.
Revised budget for nineteen was, what, three point three million? We were going to go in.
Right, and this was as of March?
Was revised as of March.
Yes, it's, that's what you get in budget amendment every month. So, actually, this is the as of February because we brought the March revision to you, yeah.
Okay. But yet, we're only, you're, you're in, actuals only projected at about a million dollars.
Correct. A big part of that is that we bring in, I will, we're only allowed to budget ninety-six percent of our taxes. We bring in over, usually over a hundred percent of our taxes. I cannot, I cannot adjust that budget when I submit, right, I'm going to have to adjust it till it actually happens. So we're probably getting to that point where it's, it's going to happen. This month, we'll probably see a good budget amendment coming because we'll be able to clean up a lot of positions where we've been filling with long-term stuff. So we'll see some reduction in expenditures also this next budget amendment.
But with that, the twenty-twenty proposed budget, that four point seven million still has that ninety percent ratio in there?
Yes, the ninety, yes, the taxes that are on the FEFP that were on the previous screen, so I'll have to budget it in like that. All right, so this is just showing our revenues over expenditures. We would like for the blue column to be higher than the red column. There's very few years where that has happened, in fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen. So there's about half of that happened. And then the end of this year, it looks like we're going to have to use a little bit of our fund balance. And then, of course, next year, this is the graph based on the previous screen. So it's quite a big difference from your two columns here. So this is what happens to the fund balance when we have to use that much money. And this is a ten-year history. So if you remember, from ten to eleven is when we had to start reserving so much more of our fund balance. They changed the laws back then. So that's why the gap between the two grew. But we would hope, we would want this, these two lines to grow in tandem together. And as you can see, they're going down together. The bottom line is our unrestricted. That's what we have to do with, you know, what we need to do. The difference between the two lines is all restricted in one year or another. So we want that line to go back up, though, instead of down. All right, so here we're back to the by object. So you can just see the differences in the original budget is the first column. I did throw in the actuals as of, I ran those numbers when we got back last week. And so you can see where we actually have spent about ninety-eight million of our hundred and thirty million dollars original budget. The proposed budget for next year, as you can tell, the last column shows us where our greatest increases are. Our increases are in salary, benefits. And then the purchase services is where your, our property insurance is going to be. And our site licenses and software things are going to be there. So that's why that has a higher increase than the others. Your reliance for would be your fuel, all your energy services, your electricity, that falls in there. Capital outlay, we usually don't have very much in general fund because most of that we try to pay for out of capital if we can. And then our other expenses at the bottom, that's a various of dues and fees and reserves and different things that have to be paid for out of there. But as you can tell, the greatest increase is in our salaries and benefits, with more being in benefits because of FRS and board match and workers comp that we have to pay benefits to employees, so. In this graph, we already looked at, our largest percentage of our general fund budget is our salary, then our benefits. Then the next thing is all of our purchase services that we have to do. We talked about this screen. Are there any more questions on this, on any of our expenses that we're looking at for next year?
How many total tech positions? We put in the budget for the, to split up amongst eleven elementary schools, but we'll have to let the C E O know. We're not going to do it this, because there's only four. That's only one of the initial poses that we put. Only four. There isn't any right now. At the elementary. At the elementary. How many tech tosses do we have in total? We have them at, they're not tosses. We have tech positions at the.
High schools.
High school, yeah. They're actually not tosses. They're just tech, they're tech positions.
They're tech aides.
Tech aides, yeah. We have them at the high schools and the, and the middle schools.
You're talking about dis, you're talking about school-based tech tosses in this mind?
Yes. They will report, these new positions will report to Kathy Androski or the Director of Technology. And then they will bill those out as the elementary schools need them. Right now, the elementary are trying to plug that in with just staff that have dual responsibilities, maybe a title one. They can free up part of the day to do some technology. They're not, they have nobody on staff with that responsibility. So that's what's posing the problem, is we allow iPads and want the teachers to use them in the classroom and do those kind of things.
Because that's what, and you know that, that, I mean, I know you know this. Title-one media, that's been funding tech aide at the elementary schools, at the eleven elementary schools.
And this summer, we're actually, we have a plan to buy, as Kathy does, where she's taking the tech aides from the middle and high schools for four days.
Yes.
Four days, they're expected, contribute four days of their tech person. And she's going to arrange them to go and apply support to the elementary so that we can get their, their technology up and going for those teachers to come back.
Any other questions on general fund?
What percentage did you budget for fuel increase costs?
I can't remember off the top of my head what Ms. Darmer.
When a.
There wasn't an increase.
Yeah, wasn't a percentage of increase. Your energy, what was your energy increase? Go back to that.
Not much. Hold on.
Fuel increase.
We're predicting energy. Energy will go up. Let's see.
What do you currently budget per, per gallon?
It actually only went up about, from four point six-seven, four point seven, five, eight point seven, one percent. So it's nothing drastic, but it is just something on the way yard. Our biggest expense is going to be our salaries and benefits and our property and casualty insurance. So remember, this is our worst-case scenario. And when we come back next month, I think is on the calendar, then we'll look better than this. So hopefully we'll get better. All right, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would like to have a break. I see this power's left. Do you think we could have a five-minute break?
Yeah, we, I think we'll finish, aren't we?
Yeah, we're getting ready to go into.
Oh, yeah, then we, you have to take a five-minute break.
All right.
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah.
I have a phone up here. Did I lose their phone?